...our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. It was a desire to find ways to excel in our work, help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that we would challenge each other to reach higher and farther to be the best we can be. We ask this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here we have the council minutes of the previous meeting on July 28th. Are there any corrections to be made on those minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I didn't find any corrections to be made.
All right, the minutes stand approved. All right, at this time, we'll have a public hearing. Public hearing is going to be held for the purpose of obtaining comments on proposed text amendments to the Green Hill zoning code. I'll ask the manager to review the proposed amendments and then we'll open the floor to anyone wishing to make comments. And when recognized, please come forward to the lectern and give your name and address and state your comments or questions.
Thank you, Mayor. It's okay, I slipped my face mask off so people could hear me, okay? I will just run through it. This has been on the website for quite some time and available to the public as well as to council. But for the benefit of everybody listening or present tonight, our proposed zoning text amendments are doing a few things. First of all, we're adding some definitions for uses that were not previously defined in our code. For example, body art establishments, pawn shops, vape and smoke shops, and event center. Secondly, the new uses are being added in as conditional uses. I believe we all know what conditional is. I probably don't. Some of the texts I had here on my little cheat sheet was for the benefit of the public as they were reading it. But again, these would be conditional uses, which in a nutshell means that if somebody's proposing that use, they go to form, they go to planning commission, who would then review it in terms of standards that are also laid out, many of them already in our code, some to be added with the new uses. Then planning commission does have the ability to put conditions on the use if they do indeed permit it. We had some, some of the existing language was already reiterated as in the existing conditional uses for a B1. But there, we start with a new one. It's not a new use, but it's a clarification for, we have, we have in our code right now, it's section 1115.09 that requires all businesses in Green Hills to function within an enclosed structure. So that has been in effect. We're adding language for clarification, that places where food or beverages are not consumed within the building, but rather an outdoor eating area adjacent to, and as an accessory use to a building or lease space within a building qualifies for a conditional use. And again, it already is a conditional use, that's simply a clarification. Entertainment establishments, commercial amusement, I'll list the things that are going into the conditional uses. Game rooms, amusement arcades, retail dispensaries, cultivars or processors of medical marijuana or similar operations, vape shops, vaporizer stores, smoke shops, cigar shops, and/or similar operations that sell paraphernalia typically associated with controlled substances, hookah lounges, smoke lounges, vapor lounges, or other similar establishments, tattoo parlors, body piercing parlors, or other similar services. One item that is existing in our code, but we're moving it from permitted to conditional, and that is daycare. The main, the main reason for this is that as we have experienced a number of daycares over the last few years, we have learned that by Ohio jobs and family services, I believe it is, lays out qualifications for daycare, and they're required to have an indoor, outdoor playground. If they can't have an outdoor playground, they have to be able to accommodate an indoor playground. So we felt that was worthy of a conditional use permit to make sure those, those requirements exist before they go in there. Now, it's been a tough time for some of the users down there, down at the shopping center. Let's see, down to the, we do not currently permit in the B2, but now making a conditional use, oh yeah, okay, I'm sorry, pawn shops or similar uses are not currently permitted. We are going to accommodate them in the B2 zone, pawn shops or other similar uses, and then funeral homes and crematories, which are currently in the B1 and B3, which is, which is the village center zone. We are going to now move to the B2 as a conditional use. Again, I indicated we were going to be adding some additional standards. I think there's already like seven or eight of them listed in the current code. And to those, we are adding some additional ones for most of the new uses that we were identifying tonight. I think the exception is the daycare. And then the, the new standards include that no such use shall be established or operated within 750 feet of a school or day, or child daycare center. No such use shall be established or operated within 750 feet of an existing use of the same type. No such use shall be operated or open for business between the hours of 12:00 midnight and 8:00 a.m. The remainder is more administrative, clarifying when a certificate of zoning compliance is needed. And throughout our code, we, we would reference the zoning certificate in a few different ways, so we are trying to be consistent now, make sure everything is called a certificate of zoning compliance. So it's a little bit of a housekeeping thing going on there. One particular section where we reference temporary certificates, we delete it in their entirety because that would not be a function of zoning, that would be a function of our building officials. So it was not appropriate to keep that in our, in that section of our code. And, let's see. I've included a lot of existing verbiage, just so the new ones would make sense. Oh, the last one is under the remedies. Administrative nuisance abatement is a new clause for us. There have just been far too many instances of noncompliance that pertains to our code, which can lead to unhealthy and unsafe conditions. So this section is going to provide us with some additional tools for dealing with these situations. Let's see, in addition to other, I'll read it. In addition to other remedies provided for herein, the village council may determine by ordinance that a violation of the zoning code constitutes public nuisance. Upon such declaration of public nuisance, the building and/or zoning officials shall take such action as may be necessary to abate such nuisance, including but not limited to immediate revocation of any zoning certificate, erection of any appropriate placard indicating that the property has been declared a public nuisance, and declaring that premises may not be occupied or utilized until such violation has been corrected. Installation of chains, locks, or other mechanisms to prevent, to prevent occupancy or use of the premises until such violation has been corrected, or any other action permitted by law. So that is the summary.
Is that we declare by ordinance or by resolution?
Ordinance. Yeah, we had a little conversation on that, should be by ordinance.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a comment?
Hello, everybody. How are you? My name is Dr. Patricia Bender, the camera. It only gets to the back of our head when we talk. I am coming in regards as a resident as well as a tenant of the shopping center. I've been here for five years, I'm at the end of my lease, and I have found it very disconcerting to see these amendments coming with these ordinances. To me, it is sad to think that you've got to put such suppressing amendments in to the stores that are in the shopping center as if we are illegals, as if we do things that are inappropriate. And I, I'm very sad because when I came here five years ago, very eager with my office, I was really looking forward to putting together a committee at the shopping center, finding the opportunity to come together and develop it, and market it, and advertise, and have showings and events. But it appears as if every time we try to address something up there, we come up with a new ordinance or an amendment that says you can't come outside, you have to have a conditional permit to come outside of your office. I opened my door every day welcoming people. I was challenged with my professional signs made, that my professional signs were boring. And I got in front of a board like you all, and oh no, we didn't want to tie in signs, you know? Very, very sad. I've been in five communities and never, ever have I seen anyone, Woodland, Forest Park, Vinnity Town, none of them treated any of us like this. And when I see these amendments, and having to get a conditional permit that you like for a person to have an event in Green Hills is unfair. You don't own the shopping center. You shouldn't have a right to say whether the walls have to be insulated or soundproofed. We signed a five-year contract. When I went to Forest Park, no one came to my door and said, hey, you got a letter here, you can't, you don't even talk to me, you don't even give, you give me a letter saying I have 30 days to comply with my sign and get a permit and pay $125. And then to say my sign is boring. It's very, very sad. And the people of Green Hills, I talked to them about these amendments, and I talked to them about opportunities here, and you hardly see anyone here because they know you don't listen. And it's very sad. I eagerly came back to Green Hills to make this place more exciting, more fun. I volunteered with the 75th anniversary. It was my stuff we auctioned off, the money to be made for the village. And we worked with Hardest Festival, and it was my money that I put out for prizes. And when the skateboard tournament couldn't happen?
Time's up. Three minutes are up.
I wasn't told I have three minutes.
No, you can go ahead.
And when it got rained out, I got a letter saying, oh no, we, as the village, didn't stand by the skateboard tournament. You have to buy and pay to have insurance to have your skateboard tournament. Very, very disappointing. And you know, when someone has an opportunity to play music outside, and you know how stressed people are, and people enjoyed it, and we were very compliant, and the police were, came around regularly, and nobody caused problem, and it was over at 9:30, and everybody was just fine. And then to come up and say, oh no, you have to make sure to let us know when you're going to do something. You know, to me, it's like we are, and my brother sent me a YouTube, oh, did you know Green Hills is historical site? Oh yeah, I know that. Wow, I didn't know it was the historical site. Well, listen, let me just say something, we're not doing anything. We don't do tours. We don't have events going on, we don't celebrate anything. Even Dale, Lawrenceburg, Wyoming, they're having people out on their comments with social distancing. We're not having the Hardest Festival, we're not having anything. And it's really very disappointing. And these amendments demonstrate how hovering you are. And Yvonne, you drive around with your little assistant checking up on everything, making sure signs are right, and people aren't working inside the buildings, and, you know, the shopping center's almost full. And if you don't want a pawn shop or a vape shop, why wouldn't you want an event center? And body art establishment, why are you suppressing the shopping center?
They're hitting those.
I, I find it very hard to understand that you all, do any of you have a store in the shopping center? No, nobody. But I do, because I saw a bigger picture of what Green Hills can be. And I really think you need to stop hovering as a person who rents and a person who lives here. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I do have a written statement that I will not read, but I would like to pass out.
Sure.
My name is Tim Burke from the law firm of Manley Burke. I don't think I've worked with any of the elected officials here previously, but I certainly have worked extensively with your attorney and with Yvonne back when she was in Lockland. I've been the law director for the village of Lockland for 40 years, the law director of Evendale for the last 12 years. Yesterday, for the very first time, one of our other attorneys, Kathy Ryan, and I met with Steve Rusabi on behalf of Village Gate. So we are just getting into this issue. Kathy Ryan, who joined me in meeting with Steve, is a city planner as well as an attorney, and is the law director of Arlington Heights, Glendale, and soon no longer to be, but currently the law director of Amelia, which is the largest village in the state of Ohio to ever vote itself out of existence. I have had the opportunity to look in the last 24, 48 hours at the language that was in front of the planning commission. What I have not seen is any ordinance to adopt that language yet. And I presume there is no ordinance at this point. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Both Kathy and I had some serious reservations, and you just summarized some of them, about some of the provisions in the proposed language, which is clearly aimed at the center. There's no question about that, and I think you would all acknowledge that. There's very little in these proposals aimed at anything other than the current shopping center. It is very aggressive language against the shopping center, and some of it, I believe, goes beyond what is appropriate in a zoning ordinance. Some of the provisions in this proposed language, I've never seen before in a zoning ordinance. And I've worked with a lot of zoning ordinances, because in addition to the communities where we are the law director, I've worked or appeared in front of virtually every other community in the greater Cincinnati area, frequently as special counsel to those communities. I have never seen a zoning code provision that says the electric company is not allowed to provide electricity to a building or a unit that doesn't have a zoning certificate. How is an owner of property ever even supposed to show that facility, that space, if they can't even turn the lights on? And I don't even know that Green Hills, I haven't had the opportunity to research this, as significant as the powers are that you have, I don't know that you can tell a public utility licensed not by you but by the state of Ohio that they can't provide electricity to a vacant storefront when that electricity is absolutely necessary. I don't know that you can simply empower yourselves to declare a property to be a public nuisance when I see absolutely no due process built into that language that gives the property owner the opportunity for a hearing. And I don't know, and I've, I've seen legislative bodies, including Cincinnati City Council and the county commission, try and act as a quasi judicial body. It generally does not work. Courts are the appropriate place to have property declared to be a public nuisance. And courts know how to provide due process. What you propose does not do that. What's clear to me in quickly looking at this over the last few days is that I acknowledge there have been significant difficulties between the village and the owner of the shopping center. Some lack of communication, some frankly excessive enforcement on certain issues. What I would like to request is the same thing, I was at a planning commission meeting in Evendale last week, where we have a recommendation to rezone the Cincinnati City firing range and a large piece of property on which GE is currently a tenant. And an attorney from Frost Brown came to the planning commission and said essentially the same thing that I'm saying tonight, I'm brand new to this, I'm trying to get a handle on what's going on and see what we can do to be helpful. That attorney from Frost Brown said, I just got involved in this over the weekend, and I request that you keep the public hearing open, give us the opportunity to get a handle on this, and let us come back to you in 30 days at your next meeting with any additional comments. That is my request tonight. But in addition to that, what I would request is the opportunity to sit down with Yvonne, with them, and see what we can do to try and work things out, so that instead of ending up in court, which is where we will end up if this is adopted as proposed, instead of that and wasting everybody's time and money, we try and create a better working relationship so that tenants in the center have the opportunity to thrive, and Green Hills has the opportunity to thrive. That, that center, as you know better than I, was part of your history. And as an aside, part of that history has been, Green Hills had a place where you could take cars that needed to be repaired, and it's been there for decades as a permitted use. And now you would make it a conditional use?
That, that, that's not being changed. That's in there now, that's, that's been that way. I, I think there's some confusion on what is new to conditional uses and what's existing, so we do need to talk.
Well, the fact of the matter is that garage, and you and I have already got a conversation about it, that garage is going to have new ownership very quickly. You cannot treat it as a new conditional use.
Right.
It is a nonconforming, perfectly legal use. Don't threaten. You're shaking your head that it's not.
No, you're, you're correct.
We're saying you're correct.
We're saying, that's, we would not do that.
But all of these things come as threats to the center, and that's what you say you've experienced. We've never met, as far as I know. I didn't know what you were going to say, you didn't know what I was going to say. There are challenges here. There ought to be a way to avoid what will otherwise be a continuing fight, and that serves no one. So I would ask for 30 days to have the opportunity to talk with folks, end my plan, and see what we can do to improve things, rather than rush forward with ordinance amendments that are clearly targeted to cause problems for the center. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello, I'm Kyle, you guys know me. Thank you, by the way, for what you do for the community, appreciate it. After reading over this, and looking at how much footage we got in the community, pretty much that's our business district, is the shopping center. Okay, we have to generate revenue to come to the community, so that the financial responsibility is not all on the residents. We already have high property taxes. By putting such an umbrella of a, like she was saying, a cloud over that, because maybe some of you may not like the shopping center, but what I can say is, it's been improving. And though maybe you might not be a fan of a tattoo shop, it doesn't mean it wouldn't bring in revenue. And what's weird as F is an arcade, if I read it right, it means that an arcade cannot be within 750 foot of a school. The funny thing is, a community building access a school right now, if I'm not mistaken, for troubled kids. And also, daycares are there. What's wrong with having an arcade for kids to go to? You guys grew up playing pinball machines, playing Pac-Man, and now you want to limit that, which to me makes no logical sense, because this community, during this unprecedented time in the United States, needs as much revenue as we can get, because people are losing their jobs, not having enough money coming into the household, so you're losing tax revenue. So why would you sit and try to limit so much? There has to be a way that a compromise can be met between you and the shopping center to make this a better community. That's all.
Okay, proceed with our, Mr. Smith is not here tonight to do his presentation.
Mayor, if, if I could though, you will need to make a determination if you want to close the public hearing, or if you want to leave the public hearing open for further comment. And that's a perfect, that's...
You mean like to continue the public hearing in another meeting?
Yes. But you, council will need to take some action, either to say we're closing the public hearing, or we're keeping the public hearing open until your next meeting, or, I mean, that's an appropriate action for council to take, but you'll need to, you need to let people know what we're doing here.
Jeff, I would assume you can have a discussion about that?
That council can have a discussion about that? Yeah, I mean, this, it's a council...
Well, I know, I'm just saying that...
I would say, you know, continue the public meeting at the next meeting.
At the September 22nd meeting.
Right. Yeah.
I believe we have something jumping on the podium there.
Okay.
I know I'm late, but since we're still in the public meeting. Being on the...
You want to state your name?
I'm sorry, Bud Walderman. I live on Bayham Drive in Green Hills. I don't know when you started the ball rolling on this. When did you start, when did you write this, these revisions?
I think you started like last October or November.
Probably.
You know, because the planning commission had their public hearing, and then COVID hit, so we originally had another council meeting, public hearing scheduled, and that got canceled, so.
Well, the planning commission public meeting, which I attended, was, when was that? That was over 30 days ago, wasn't it?
Oh yeah, that was either January, maybe, December or January.
I remember nobody showed up, even though it was advertised.
No, everybody was there at the...
He's talking about the public.
Oh.
I mean, no one from the public showed up at that meeting, if I remember. So my point is, this didn't just happen last week. This has happened for quite some time, and the public's had an opportunity to talk about it. I'm not going to get into all the legal fine points because I don't know anything about it. But the only other point I wanted to make was the, the fact that in, in running a government that has to interface with the community, and you have something like a shopping center, business district, whatever, and you, to me, there's two ways of dealing with that. You either deal with it upfront and try to be conscientious, and form it, mold it into the kind of place, the kind of places and the kind of event, and kind of facility you would like to see, that would, would be positive for your community, or you wait until after everything happens, and then if you got a problem, then you go after the problem. Well, I'd much rather see you going after the problems beforehand, being proactive, than to wait until after you have a problem and then try to fix it. It's a lot harder to fix it than it is to prevent it from happening in the first place. That's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
All right, thank you. So we'll continue this public hearing at the next regular scheduled council meeting in September...
22nd.
22nd, okay.
Do we need to make a motion, or?
I think we have another speaker.
This will be the last person, and then we'll continue in September.
So my name is Christina Erby, a resident, and I was actually just coming to a...
And I was actually just coming to attend. I had no idea what was going to be discussed this evening. So I want to commend the people that stood up. I also want to, I'm sorry to put you guys on the spot, introduce two young residents of Green Hills. And that's Dr. Betsy Lehman and Ken. So we all, we work at UC. And one of the things we always talk about, and it's why I'm really concerned about this conversation, is how to encourage more young professional people to move to Green Hills. You know, Green Hills, I think, has a history of residents that grew up here. And you know, you have to change things in order to encourage new, younger, vital residents to come in. So hearing about these concerns about the shopping center is very concerning to me. And as I look around, I look at a council that lacks any diversity except for women. That's also concerning to me. So I love living in Green Hills. I love the chief. I mean, I like it. We, I speak highly of it all the time. It definitely needs to increase the diversity that we see in residents that own homes, not just renting homes, but owning homes. And I know myself and some of my neighbors are very invested in keeping our street clean, doing the best that we can. So everywhere I look in Green Hills, whether it's a shopping center, a street, a person, that's all reflective of who we are. And so with all this tension that's going on in the country, I want to be very proud of this place that I live in. I want to see some changes. I like to see more diversity in our administration. I don't know how that happens. I don't even know if it's ever existed. I'm encouraging it because we should be reflective of everyone that's in the community. My plan is to try to be more engaged and involved. Like I said, I have nothing about these orgs that says I don't own a business in Green Hills. I don't have an issue with a tattoo shop. I don't know if just that little thing was thinking that it would draw a certain element of people, and that's definitely not true. So I wanted, I say that to say, let us keep an open mind about the businesses. You know, I was beginning to see diverse business owners. That's really important to our community. Every little thing that's said here, that's done here, is reflective of what we represent. And that's probably it for me. I just need to say that because, like I said, I didn't come up here expecting to hear all of this. But I think it's important to put that out there. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So.
I know you're about to move on, but then I just want to be clear then, especially for Mr. Burke. So the public hearing is continued, open until the regular council meeting of September 22nd. And then with council's permission, in the meantime, I would like the opportunity to review what he submitted, work with the manager, and have us work with Mr. Burke to see what we can do. And if that's okay with council, that's how we'll proceed?
That's fine.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. All right, now moving on. Now we have another, now is the time, this is the time for residents to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address, and state your comments or questions. This is not intended to be a dialogue with council or village staff. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to three minutes. Speakers may not yield any or all of their time to other speakers. So now you have three minutes.
Okay, now I have three minutes to say what I want with nobody responding to me. So you all look great in your masks tonight. Can't tell if you're smiling or sticking your tongue out or whatever. But what I want to say is that we had some tree people come and they did a very quick, cut the tree down and out the door they went. But they left a bit of a mess and they actually, on Handle Lane, we got a brand new street, which is great. And now we have big divots in it from their equipment that they use to move their limbs around to get them into their little suction cup. So I was out there blowing and getting rid of the debris that they left. I had called the city to talk about it and having them come back and do it. Talked to Donna Stoffang down the street. She also called, nobody's ever come back to clean up and the like. But I went ahead and did the blowing and got it straightened up and noticed that we have major divots now in the, in the street. And unfortunately, they were brand new, so they were perfect for skateboarding or for doing rollerblades. So you might want to talk to the company about the possibility of fixing those up. The other thing I want to bring up real quick, if I have a minute and a half left, is the sewers and the covers of the sewers are chronically full of debris. And I don't understand why I have to call to get the maintenance people to clean them off. Now, they go every Monday through our streets and they pick up the debris of people that leave out in their yards. But why can they not uncover the debris that's in the street? Because what happens is that debris gets down into the sewer lines and we know how sewer lines are in Green Hills and having to get things cleaned up. So I'd really like to suggest that maybe talking to maintenance and seeing if they couldn't uncover the sewers in the streets when they're cleaning up their debris would be greatly appreciated. I don't want to sound like I'm calling every month and Vanessa say, oh, what is it today? So thank you very much.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, moving on, report to village officials, municipal manager Yvonne Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple additional things I do want to mention, an update on the Witten Road. Work that's going on, the curb installation was completed today, except for the curb ramp portions. Work is moving along pretty good on the new traffic lights installation. Although remember, they'll get the basis of that in, but we'll have a little delay before we actually get the polls for putting up. Weather permitting, they are now estimating the road should be milled and paved by the second week of September. So hopefully that will happen. We have gotten an estimate on milling and repaving Flanders and Funston. It's less than $50,000 for those two sections. So the engineers are soliciting some, at least three bids for us. And I hope to have that by our September work session to review. And then the tree removal was the other thing that I did want to mention. They're completing their first round. We'll have a second round right after the first of the year when we get some additional tree money. So first, we were aware, I've already sent pictures down to the vendor concerning the damage on the street for them to address that. And also, I wanted to point out that the stomps will remain. They will be part of the second round of removals. So again, it was a, our ability to afford it, we had to get the priority trees down, stomps remain, but all the rest of it will come out after the first of the year. That's all I've got right now.
Any comments or questions?
I have a question. What is the actual deadline for the completion of the job that they said they were going to have it done by? In other words, when can we start asking for discounts for delays?
Are you talking about Witten Road?
Yes.
Ooh, that may have gone to the end of the year. I remember we had to have a longer period.
Okay.
No, we're fine because of the, we knew there'd be, I think it was a nine to 10 month delay period for the traffic.
It feels like it was a long time since we were in with it.
It actually just started, what, June? I was going to say it's gone really fast. It just seems longer.
It seems longer.
Witten Road was in such bad shape for so long. Yeah, but no, they're doing fine.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, law director Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. I did submit a very brief written report. I think it's in the packet. I don't have anything to report beyond that. And I'll just confirm, we don't have any pending legal matters right now.
Okay, thank you. All right, council clerk Tanya Soller.
Can I make a report?
All right. Chief of police Neil Furtman, I know you have something.
I wouldn't disappoint you, Mayor. I want to start with the statistics as we enter five months into a global pandemic. We've seen a reduction in our statistics. We investigated seven accidents this past month, seven crimes. There were a total of 713 calls for service as compared to 624 last July. So those were up just a bit. The department provided assistance to the public in 102 instances. We assisted other agencies 58 times and processed 11 criminal arrests or citations and 45 traffic arrests or citations. We did have a bit of good news. We were awarded an $11,070 grant from the state of Ohio for body armor. We took this opportunity, and we've been studying this since early this year, to allow our officers to wear the external carrier vest, which means that a lot of this, 18 pounds of gear goes in various spots. I'm told that this will allow police officers' backs to last a lot longer. I think mine's a lost cause at this point, but.
And to be able to sit in chairs with arms.
Exactly, exactly. It does help a whole lot. So we were, we were very fortunate. We did not think that we would get everything that we asked for. We did. So this was, came at an opportune time for us. And we're going to be proceeding with ordering those vests. We did have two different styles. We had a black and a dark blue. It was submitted to a review committee consisting of our municipal manager, and she selected the dark blue. That's what we'll be ordering. Back to school means a focus on safety. Just a few days ago, we worked again with our school system. We had a safety presentation, which we do annually with the schools. Some years, we do a tabletop exercise. Some years, we do an actual exercise with teachers in the classroom and officers enacting various scenarios. This year was our first virtual exercise. So we did this all via Google meeting. And we did two separate presentations, one for our primary school and one for the community building and for our middle school. So we appreciate working with the school system and ensuring that our children, the faculty and staff are as safe as they possibly can be. We recently participated in a pursuit symposium. I don't think it takes any kind of a cursory review of the news to see that that's one of the more difficult things in our line of work to manage. We strive to keep the public as safe as we can and balance the expectation to apprehend offenders. The decision to engage in police pursuits involves a lot of risks and a lot of challenges. So we constantly are looking at better ways to do this to keep not only innocent people safe, but our officers safe and even the people we're pursuing safe. So Corporal Mike Mathis, one of our supervisors, participated in this. And this will result in an ongoing discussion in the development of state standards, which because of our Kalia accredited status, we already exceed. So I think we're staying ahead of the curve on this. For those who may be watching, you may get a knock on your door from a federal census worker. That process, which is mandated in the United States Constitution, is now taken to the field. And field data collection operations for the 2020 census will continue through the end of September. The staff can be identified by a specific photo ID. They provided all of the information to us. If any of our residents have any question about that, you're not required to answer your door, but it is a pretty important process if you do choose to do that. But if you do have a suspicion about whether or not the person is legitimate, feel free to give us a call and we'll be glad to come out and check it out and let you know whether or not there's any kind of problems. Recently, you may recall, we were a national winner in the Pay It Forward campaign. We were one of 12 departments selected throughout the United States for our efforts to get information out to our residents about COVID-19. Our state rep, Jessica Miranda, took it upon herself to have a resolution passed in the Ohio House. And we were presented with that resolution recently. So we, we thank her for that recognition. I do want to close out by mentioning two things that I think are noteworthy and they reflect the quality of the staff that we have here in our police department. Shortly after midnight, a few weeks ago on August 14th, Officer David Bacon observed a subject that was seated inside a silver Chevrolet Silverado. And it was in the rear of the community building. The officer checked on him and he told the officer that he was a cleaning employee. And he said he had a flat tire and he was waiting on his boss to arrive. The officer observed that the vehicle had very recent damage to it along with the flat tire. And he also saw a substance attached to the vehicle from what appeared to be a sticker on the bumper. He questioned the individual as to whether or not he was possibly involved in a recent accident. And the driver admitted that he had hit an object, but he didn't know what it was. What it was, was a juvenile bicycle at Sharon Road and Witten Road. The accident was actually in the jurisdiction of Forest Park because of the injuries and a pedestrian involved or the bicyclist involved. They did call in the sheriff's office to reconstruct the accident. So based on the person's admissions, Officer Bacon immediately detained him and read him, as Miranda writes, told him that a pedestrian was struck while riding a bike around the same timeframe that he hit the object. Officer Bacon received a commendation from my office. And that commendation read, "Your alertness solved a crime that caused injury to a juvenile and cleared the case so the offender could be held accountable. And you cleared the case so the offender could be held accountable for his crime. Your actions reflected excellent police work." Second incident occurred on that date. On August 14th, we received a call from a Green Hills resident who wanted to talk to me about the actions of one of our officers. So I looked up the report and I read the report submitted by Police Officer Andy Moore on July 19th. And what he said in the report was, and I won't leave, I'll leave the name out, but the individual stated that he had thoughts of hurting himself but could not go through with it. His mother called 911 and stated that he wanted to shoot himself. But after speaking with the individual, he stated he did not have any guns in the house, but he did have knives. The individual stated he was upset because he got in an argument with his neighbor and he felt the world was against him. He had a friend staying with him, so he felt a little better and did not want to be transported to the hospital. In commending Officer Moore, what I wrote to him was, "The individual's account was very similar, but much more personal. He told me that he felt very down that day and had both suicidal thoughts and homicidal thoughts. He said he was in the frame of mind where he wanted to kill someone and then himself. He said, 'You were understanding and helpful and changed his thoughts, a change that has continued to this day. This is not the first time that you have made a difference in someone's life. I have seen this firsthand on calls with you and have heard about it countless times from citizens who have called or written to thank you. Oftentimes, we all get discouraged by the mundane nuisances in life. But through your career, you should know that you have regularly made a difference, helping people who are at such a low point in their life that they believe there is no hope. You have a unique talent for showing empathy when it is most needed and as such, you reflect the highest values of our profession. You represent the Green Hills Police Department well, and I'm very proud to work with you." So on that brighter note, I will conclude my report.
Thank you. Any comments to the chief other than keep up the good work?
I just wanted to add that with the grant that you have secured, the safety of yourself and your officers, it would be a little better wanting for all of you to be going home every night without any worries.
Thank you.
I also know that your name precedes your presence in many places. And I wanted to tell you the opinion that I have of you. And that is a keen, competent researcher with a vision and has a plan and will execute and has never failed to complete that thought, whatever your actions have been. So I really appreciate your being here. And I feel kind of responsible since you came because I was here at the time and you were one of the persons that interviewed. So I really appreciate you and I really feel that we have the best police chief that anybody around us would have.
Well, I thank you, but I have really a lot of great help.
Okay, moving on, the mayor's report. I don't have total details on how the mayor's court is being distributed. That'll be announced at the next meeting. But for July, the amount of money taken in in fines is $9,062.22. I also wanted to comment, I took part in a Zoom meeting with the county COVID, Hamilton County COVID meeting today with Commissioner Dreehouse and the Board of Health. County COVID meeting today with Commissioner Drehouse and the Board of Health. And I don't know, you've probably seen in the news, Friday, the governor announced new guidelines would be coming out as it relates to concerts and public events, both inside and outside. And I questioned the Board of Health Commissioner about that, if we would be able to hold concerts again. I know that came up in the discussion here a little while ago, a person concerned about concerts, festivals, and that sort of thing, and they're not allowed by state order. And when we did have a concert that was put on, on the Commons, we were reminded by the Board of Health that that was not legal and that should not be done. And, and we've not been able to hold any of our concerts. But the comment from the Board of Health Director is that he hasn't gotten the final orders from the state to set the guidelines as to what we will have to operate by. The governor, State Board of Health, have issued the order today, so the, this afternoon, so whenever the Board of Health comes up with something, hopefully, we might be able to get a concert or two in. The requirements are fairly extensive for putting something like this on and having hand sanitizers spread around the area, marking where people can be, staging the performers have to be so far apart from each other, masks have to be worn, except when they're actually performing. So, it's fairly involved, but I'd like to see us try to, to at least get a couple concerts in this month of September, if we can do it. And that's all I have to report. Moving on, recreation cable TV, Natasha Metz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, someone mentioned, you know, we canceled Harvest Fest and the following events for 2020. Nobody wanted Harvest Fest as much as I did. I spent all last year very pregnant for eighteen hours on my feet at Harvest Fest. I loved Harvest Fest. I hate the fact that we aren't going to be able to have it this year. Was looking forward to bringing my little six-month-old with me, but, well, she'll be seven, eight months at that point. But that's just not possible until we get any more information from the Board of Health. So, we're kind of taking it day by day, and whatever information we get, then we can move from there. But we have not had a meeting since the last council meeting, so we'll get together and get another regulation meeting. But I did also want to take my time to commend two different sets of people. First, the police force, thank you for all the work you do. We're, we're very blessed and lucky to have the, the people that we have on that force. But in addition, I wanted to thank the service department because we know that they're stretched thin. We know that they have a lot on their plate that they have to take care of on a daily basis, and, and they can't be everywhere at once, and they do a phenomenal job of keeping our village neat and orderly and, and responding to calls of garbage or litter or anything. And I just want to make sure they know they, they are appreciated for the work that they do. So, if you could pass that on to them, I would appreciate that. And with that, that's my, end of my report.
Intergovernmental, well, any questions? Okay. Intergovernmental Affairs, laws and rules, Maria Walther.
We were supposed to have a meeting today. Received information on Monday that they had no agenda, so we did not have a meeting because of lack of agenda. We'll have to figure out when the next one will be. Mrs. Hermes and I back each other on the different committees, so let's figure out when we can have the next one, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Services and Streets, Jennifer Osmanagul.
We're still kind of waiting to see how, about the financial situation for the sidewalk repairs. So, that's still on the agenda. We'll schedule a meeting in the next few weeks, and we can definitely take a look at things about the street damage from the tree removal and then the sewer covers. We're also looking at garbage issues as well. So, we have some things, and we'll schedule a meeting for that and discuss that. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Community Development, Jeff Alder.
Yes, I guess if I'm ready to take this off for a second.
You're good.
You okay with that, Jeff?
One thing I guess I'd like to cover, and that, I'd like to take it a little bit broader than my committee. One reason we put together a mission statement for community development was, I just think it's a good thing to keep in mind why we serve the community, and I'd like to read that again if I could. I think it would be appropriate for all of council to at least think through. The Community Development Committee, or all of us, I would say, exists for the purpose of improving the quality of life for the mutual benefit of our residents. I'd like to indicate that means all residents. I, I really didn't get in, in this, and I think we all didn't get in this to serve just certain residents. It includes all residents. It includes our neighbors, not only the neighbors within our village, but outside of our village, and it also includes businesses. I find one of the most challenging things on council is kind of being painted in a corner where you assume all government thinks a certain way or a police force thinks a certain way. I don't believe that's true here. We didn't comprise ourselves, handpick ourselves in any way. We just thought we could help, and how can we best do that? For now, residents agreed and put us in this place. We didn't put ourselves in this place. And it, it's not a rebuttal. It's just that I want to make it clear, at least, and I think I can speak for all of us, we're here for the benefit of this community, and that includes the businesses. That includes everyone involved, renter or, or owner of a home. It, it doesn't matter. We seek optimal solutions to the challenges that face our community. We conduct business in an honest, open, and effective manner. We would love to be perfect, and, and it's not an excuse not to be perfect. I do think we prove this by saying we're going to have an open forum for thirty days to consider this and other matters, you know, so the public hearing will stay open. But I think it's easy, I actually had a resident come up to me once and said, "What are you taking?" And I said, "What are you, what are you talking about?" "Well, you're on village council. You must be taking us from some, taking something from us." That, you know, being guilty until proven innocent does not make the relationship any better. I also work, like I said, at UC, and, and I like it a lot. And, and I, I think that the same attitude down there of wanting to be as inclusive as possible exist here. You might look up here and draw your own conclusions. That's not at least where I'm coming from, and I believe that the others aren't as well. So, I just thought it would be good to reinforce these things. You know, we're here to improve the community, and we'd like to have all the answers. Sometimes, you know, we don't. But the whole purpose of what we're doing is to serve the community, and I do welcome a correction in our course if we're off. So, that concludes my report. We'll have a different community development report.
Yeah. Anybody have any comments to that? I will add a comment that you're, they're talking about how we, we are supportive of the businesses. We have a new bulletin board sign that is open to the new businesses to advertise their businesses and promote the shopping center businesses. We've always felt, so goes the shopping center, so goes the village. So, we need a viable shopping center in the core of our village, and, and we've kind of always tried to promote that. But there are certain things people need to do to work together with us on that. Okay, moving on. Now, where was I? Safety, Melanie Harries.
We did not meet today due to the lack of an agenda as well. I will get with Council Member Maria Walther to reschedule or to schedule our next meeting. I also want to thank Chief Fertlemen and also Chief Spath, who's not here, from our fire department. I believe we have excellent service from both of our public safety, I'd say departments, but the fire department is volunteer and, which is a great service as well, and I just want to recognize how much they do for us and how they don't make anything for it. So, it's truly an act of love. And also, I, I do want to second what Natasha said about the services department. They do a great job with a limited crew and a, for the time and everything. So, all of our staff has been doing a great job, especially during this time when things are unsure and roles change and procedures have to change to accommodate differences. So, thank you.
Here, here.
And I will add that when she says volunteer in the area, there are a lot of volunteer fire departments, but all of them receive some pay either for runs or training. We're still fortunate enough to have a volunteer fire department that receives zero pay for anything. So, we're one of the few, I think, and I don't know if there's anybody other than ours in Hamilton County, one of the few in this area. All right, Finance and Audit, Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You'll, you'll, you all have received a Finance Director's reports of August fifth in your email packet, and a copy of the summary page is at your desk tonight. While it's still too early to call a turnaround, the July results looked a little more normal for the month. Income tax receipts were representative of what we would normally see, and they were vastly different than the reductions that we saw in June of thirty-five point six percent and forty-four percent in May. Overall, for the year, we're still lagging about fifteen percent off of both income tax revenues as well as the general, general, overall general fund revenues versus 2019 at the same point. Real estate taxes are, are right where they have been since the first of the year installment, but we should see that number once the, it's posted here in August or, or September with the second installment. The general fund balance year to, year to year at the end of July was down eight point three-five percent at one million two hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-two cents, but it also shows an improvement over the end of June when the balance for the year was off nearly fourteen percent. On the expense side, staff has maintained their promise to hold down the budget and decrease spending ninety-two thousand dollars excluding transfers that have already been made. Unless you have any questions, this is the end of my report. I will have a resolution making some minor amendments to, to a couple appropriations a bit later. And I would also like to recognize my neighbors who walk by my house on a daily basis. Good to see you.
Are they sidewalk inspectors?
They could be. I don't know.
We can always use that. All right. We have no unfinished business, new business, and actually, we are going to add, we need a resolution to add this to the new business?
A motion.
A motion.
To add an additional resolution?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. So, we have this resolution, twenty-twenty, to add. So, I need a motion to add that to the new business agenda. Do we have a number for that?
It would be seventeen.
Seventeen.
Department.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I move to adopt a resolution number twenty-twenty-seventeen.
Not to adopt.
Not to adopt?
Just to put on the agenda.
To put on the agenda, okay.
Add to the new business.
I move to put on the agenda, resolution number twenty-twenty-seventeen, resolution revoking the zoning certificate for twelve minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second. Can we just do a voice vote?
You can do all in favor, just to add.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. So, first item, new business is ordinance number twenty-twenty-dash-oh-two-dash-L-N-R. First reading by title only, adopting chapter five-five-five of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinances regarding the use of public facilities. Ms. Walther?
Ordinance number twenty-twenty-oh-two-L-N-R, first reading by title only. I need to tell everybody here on council that this is a first reading only. It's going to go to work session, and maybe some amendments added to it, and we may also then vote on the work session. In other words, we're going to have the work session first, see if we're going to change anything, then perhaps vote on that or leave it for the twenty-second at that time. And this ordinance is adopting chapter five-five-five of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinances regarding use of public facilities.
Okay. All right. The next is ordinance number twenty-twenty-dash-thirteen-dash-L-N-R. First reading by title only, amending section three-three-five-point-oh-nine-A of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinances regarding front license plates.
This is ordinance number twenty-twenty-zero-three-L-N-R. First reading by title only, amending section three-three-five, period, zero-two of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinances regarding front license plates.
And that's mainly to bring this in line with the state law, doing away with front license plates. Okay, the next one is resolution number twenty-twenty-dash-fifteen-dash-SNS, authorizing agreement between the Village of Green Hills and the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners relative to the improvement of Winton Road. Ms. Osmanagul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number twenty-twenty-dash-fifteen-SNS, authorizing an agreement between the Village of Green Hills and the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners relative to the improvement of Winton Road. Whereas, section one-five-three-point-six-one of the Ohio Revised Code provides for agreements between any county and any municipal corporation for joint construction of public improvement, and whereas, section four-five-zero-four-point-oh-four of the Ohio Revised Code provides for the application by the municipal corporation and the allocation and encumbering by the Board of County Commissioners of funds available under section four-five-zero-four-point-zero-five of the Ohio Revised Code, and whereas, Winton Road is part of the comprehensive map of the roadways of the county in accordance with section four-five-zero-four-point-zero-three of the Ohio Revised Code and is in need of improvement. And whereas, the Village of Green Hills pursuant to section four-five-zero-four-point-zero-four Revised Code of Ohio has made application and writing to the Board of County Commissioners for funds available under section four-five-zero-four-point-zero-five Revised Code of Ohio. These funds are to cover a portion of the cost of improving Winton Road. And whereas, the Village of Green Hills has filed with the county engineer a copy of the preliminary plans and estimate of cost of such improvement. And whereas, the county engineer has approved such preliminary plans and estimates of cost and found the proposed improvement is conducive to the orderly and efficient flow of traffic within and through the county, and so advised the Board of County Commissioners. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners has allocated from funds available for such purpose as provided in section four-five-zero-four-point-zero-five-B-one of the Ohio Revised Code for a portion of the cost of such improvement. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners shall certify to the county auditor the amount of any funds allocated to Village of Green Hills. Final detailed plans or statements of work to be done shall be submitted to the county engineer for approval. Upon approval by the engineer, the Board of County Commissioners shall have encumbered the monies necessary to fulfill awarded contractual or other obligations for approved project costs. And whereas, upon notification by the Village of Green Hills that the work on an approved project has commenced, the county auditor shall draw a warrant for such encumbered amount on the county treasurer payable to the Village of Green Hills. And whereas, the Village of Green Hills shall use all monies received by it under section four-five-zero-four-point-oh-four Ohio Revised Code for the purpose for which they are encumbered and return for deposit in the fund established by Division B-one of section four-five-zero-four-point-zero-five Ohio Revised Code, any monies not so used. And whereas, a joint agreement with the Board of County Commissioners for such improvement should be authorized and approved. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Village of Green Hills, State of Ohio, Section One, it is hereby declared necessary and to the best interests of the Village of Green Hills to execute an agreement with the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners in connection to execute an agreement with the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners in connection with the improvement of Winton Road. Section 2, the municipal manager should be and hereby is authorized and directed to execute the attached agreement for and on behalf of the Village of Green Hills, with the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners, under terms and conditions listed in the attached agreement, which is deemed to be a part of this resolution, as if fully set forth herein and when so approved and executed, shall be in full force and effect. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Okay, it's been moved to second. Any comments?
Again, this is additional $85,000 grant to put towards our Winton Road project.
All right. Clerk call the roll?
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Ms. Ossmanoglu?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Okay, resolution 2020-15-SNS passes. The next resolution is resolution 2020-16-F, resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 2020-16-F, resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers. Whereas, the 2020 annual appropriations that were adopted on December 10th, 2019 are to be amended. And whereas, appropriations must not exceed the total available resources of the village per Ohio Revised Code, section 5705 dot 36A5. Therefore, an amended certificate of estimated resources has been requested from the county budget commission. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section 1. Since certain actions are needed in the monies appropriated so to permit the Village of Green Hills to meet its fiscal obligations for the year 2020, the following items of expenditures are to supplement the appropriations for expenditure for the year 2020. First item, fund description, golf fund, number 2908, appropriation $3,342, change $3,834.34 for a total of $7,176.34. Second item, fund description, other capital projects, account number 4901, the original appropriation was $399,664.79, change is 64 cents. Section 2, that from the following transfers of fund be made from the previously appropriated monies, none. This resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments?
64 cents.
Make sure you count that.
64 cents.
It was apparently rounding here.
Apparently somehow when we were doing some of those earlier, 64 cents was left in the account, so she just wanted to be able to clear that out and move it over into the appropriate column.
We definitely wouldn't want to be written up for that.
The first one, golf fund, that was a balance that we had from the previous year. Beginning of this year, we had only appropriated a portion of it, and now we're doing the rest so we can spend it.
Okay. All right. It's been moved to second. Clerk call the roll?
Ossmanoglu?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, resolution number 2020-16-F passes. Next is resolution number 2020-17, and that's LNR.
Oh, I don't know.
LNR, 17.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want me to?
Resolution number 2020-17, resolution revoking the zoning certificate for 12 Swin. Whereas, section 1153, period 02 of the Green Hills zoning code provides that any zoning certificate issued upon a false statement shall be void. And whereas, whenever the fact of such false statement shall be established to a satisfaction of the village council, the zoning certificate shall be revoked by notice in writing to be delivered to the holder of the void certificate upon the premises concerned or in some conspicuous place upon the set premises. And whereas, any person who shall proceed thereafter with such work or use without having obtained a new zoning certificate in accordance with the appropriate regulation shall be deemed guilty of a violation thereof. And whereas, on or about July 30, 2020, BJ Discount, Inc., applied for a zoning certificate for the business at 12 Swin stating that the proposed business consisted of cell phone sale and repair, general merchandise, accessories and electronics, and computer repair. And whereas, Green Hills Council has implemented a moratorium that prohibits the issuance of any permits for vape shops or similar uses. And whereas, the applicant's knowledge of the moratorium dates back to January of 2020 from both conversations and emails that were exchanged on the topic. Most recently, on July 31, 2020, the village manager denied the application because of the moratorium. The applicant then opted to amend the application, indicating that he would only open the cell phone portion of the store. And whereas, based on observation and photographs, the business at 12 Swin is advertised as a smoke shop, and the majority of the inventory readily available through the window is related to the smoke shop, clearly in violation of the moratorium. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Hamilton County, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring, section 1, that it is hereby determined that the proposed business located at 12 Swin appears to be in violation of the moratorium prohibiting vape shops and similar uses. Section 2, that the zoning certificate issued for 12 Swin was based upon the false statement of the applicant. Section 3, that the fact of such false statement is hereby established by council, and council thereby, hereby revokes the existing zoning certificate. And section 4, that the municipal manager is hereby directed to provide notice of such revocation in writing to be delivered to the holder of the void certificate upon the premises concerned or in some conspicuous place upon the set premises. And section 5, that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its adoption. And Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved to second. The discussion?
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And I believe the business owners here tonight, and Mr. Burka State as well, so I want to kind of summarize for you what has happened. It was early in this year, I think, that Mr. Shaday, I hope I pronounced that properly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Come up to the office, we talked about it, the fact that the moratorium was in place and that he could not open the business at that time, so then I guess it was in July when you resubmitted, yes, sir?
Let her finish first.
Okay. So he resubmitted his form quite the same way, where he had listed general merchandise, and the first time we had met general merchandise, he had explained to me was tobacco products, I believe is how it was worded. Right, I don't have that one right in front of me, but that was my recollection. And I remember we had some discussion and it fell under the moratorium. So this, the next one came worded the same way, so I interpreted it the same way for two reasons. First, that's how it was the first time, and second, your sign was submitted saying "smoke shop" on it. So based on that, I denied the application for, and I have this all in your packet, I'm just kind of summarizing it for you. I denied the application for zoning, and he then opted a few days later to revise that to be cell phones, the cell phones, computers, and electronic services, I think it said on it. So I did approve that because it did not include the portion that falls under the moratorium, so we, that zoning certificate was approved. So I was very surprised, as I think we all were, when over the weekend, everything we see going in there, the smoke shop portion again of the sign had been denied. This basic sign went up, but the smoke shop sign went up inside the building, and all the products that are very visible are all the paraphernalia type items, and I've included pictures for you to all see. So based on that, I wrote the letter you have in front of you of August 24th, which was sent and posted on the business, that the, that is in, it is in violation of the moratorium, and he was given until 6:00 this evening to remove everything that's related to the moratorium. The "smoke shop" sign is down, but the products are all still there. So he was informed that you would be considering this this evening, and I might turn it over to you from here because it requires a resolution of council, which is what was just read.
Correct.
Correct. This is based on a provision, an existing provision in the zoning code that says that whenever a zoning certificate is issued upon a false statement, then that zoning certificate is void. But it takes council action to establish, to council satisfaction, that fact, and that's why the resolution is before you tonight for your consideration.
I would like just to say that the statement wasn't a false statement. When I initially applied for the zoning certificate, I did not mention a "smoke shop" or anything in there, even though the moratorium is not clear and it doesn't specify "smoke product" or "tobacco." It says, states vape lounges and tattoo shops, and it doesn't include either the word "smoke" or "tobacco." Even though the moratorium doesn't mention these two words, I put "general merchandise" to include anything that I need to sell in the store to support the initial and the main business, which is the cell phone sale and retail. Mrs. Vaughn, she predetermined the rejection of the application, okay, even before she reached the application, she had predetermined that she was going to reject it, okay, based on general merchandise and based on an assumption that she made, okay? So to satisfy her needs, I thought, okay, if general merchandise will make you happy, I'll just remove it off the application, and so I did. I did not, at any point, at any time, say that I will not sell the "smoke" product in there because the moratorium doesn't specify, doesn't say that I can't sell "smoke" or "tobacco." If this was the case, the mayor's shop next door to me sells tobacco, and they sell "smoke," and they sell alcohol. So I did not lighten the statement, I just want to make that clear. Then, today at 6:00, a police officer starts by the shop and orders my partner there to shut down the shop with no warrant, with no court order. By what right?
That's not true.
That's true. And I have my worker, and he can come here.
How did the officer come up here? He didn't order your shop shut down.
I have cameras.
Okay.
It's not true.
Thanks.
You took a picture.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I think concerning the word "smoke," I mean, is, are we clear, is it clear enough for us to proceed?
Well, I think what council should be considering is the amended application for a zoning certificate. And on this application where it says, "Give a detailed description of proposed business, service, product, etc.," the application is for cell phone sale and repair, electronics, accessories, and computer repair. So the question before council is, was that, is this an accurate description of the application for a zoning certificate?
And what's presently there.
And, yes, compared to what appears to be presently there.
And I did just want to say, I didn't just assume that it would be "smoke." They, at the same time, excuse me, if I could finish, at the same time, his sign contractor brought in a permit for a sign, and the sign clearly said "smoke shop" on it. And we told him he'd have to revise it, he came back and put the Boost Mobile at the bottom. So I didn't just kind of like, on a whim, think he was going to do a "smoke shop." There was legitimate reasons why.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Clerk call the roll?
Was it? Was it moved and seconded?
I don't know.
Oh, I thought it was. Hold on, okay.
It was, I seconded it.
Well, it was moved and seconded?
Sorry.
Mr. Lee?
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't revise from the, aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Ms. Ossmanoglu?
Aye.
Mr. Ball's fine.
Resolution number 2020-17-LNR passes. Okay, calendar?
Mrs. Hermes, we confirm the 22nd. September 22nd. Same organization, the safety, lots of rules, then council? Okay, September?
Yeah, 13th, 6th.
Okay, September 22nd.
Anything else? Hopefully we can announce a concert someday.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah. All right, nothing else, the meeting adjourned.
Ms. Cover, can you put it on the calendar?
Yeah. And you're at 6?
6.